All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Thursday, June 23rd. This is at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangie Board of Education's regular meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Dr. Deborah Coe.
Present.
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
And Dr. Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. We have no amendments or addendums.
No, sir.
So moved. Okay, have a second, please. All right, any discussion on the agenda? All right, please call the roll, Ms. Hatfield.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Deborah Coe.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the Board President's Report. Just let me start with some comments and we'll open up the discussion. So on June 13th, Governor Dewine signed House Bill 99 into law that provided an update on new and ongoing school safety initiatives in Ohio. Among other things, this bill allows boards of education to permit teachers to carry firearms in their districts and lowers the state mandated training requirements to do so. The bill also makes it clear that boards of education are the decision makers as to whether this practice is adopted in their districts. We appreciate the state's attention to this important issue of school safety, which is a topic we take seriously and we continue to discuss in a variety of ways throughout the summer and during the year ahead. We are also thankful to our community for their ongoing support of the investments and enhancements we have made to our security strategy. We've been able to expand the number of school resource officers and add security vestibles to all of our buildings, providing an environment where our students and staff can feel safe. These are just two examples of actions taken and or underway to continue to ensure we have a comprehensive security strategy. As to House Bill 99 in particular, the board has to decide what is right for Olentangie schools. Board Policy 3217, Weapons prohibits weapons in our schools and on our property unless otherwise designated by the board, so the board does not permit teachers to carry firearms. I'd like to take the opportunity to ask my fellow board members to share their thoughts as to whether they believe this practice should be changed in light of House Bill 99. Two months ago first.
Sure, I will, thank you. And thank you so much for that summary and it's, this is truly a very important issue. It's one that's on the minds of a lot of community members. We heard from a lot of people over the past week or so as this came out. This is something that we all take extraordinarily seriously, not just as board members, but as parents. We're all parents of children in the schools. And just like all of you all and all of you that are out there watching, we want to see all of the kids come home safely every day. For me, I don't believe that arming teachers in our schools is a good idea for a couple of reasons. First of all, when we think about these sorts of situations, crisis situations, we want to have the people who are the experts in that, who have the best training, the best expertise that are going forward with these sorts of things. That would be our police, our resource officers, individuals like that. Having teachers who have very low training requirements, and we could certainly set higher training requirements, you know, it was previously around 700 hours, but having people, you know, who are not experts in that, whose job is not to do that, doesn't make sense to me. Our teacher's job is to teach. We want them to take training to be able to teach, to better support our kids, and time that we take away from that is time away from doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is maximizing learning. Second, I'm very concerned about adding additional weapons in schools that teachers have to keep track of, that we worry about, are they going to be secured? How is that going to play out? It raises concerns about accidents or other things taking place that concerns me. And last, we are in an area, we are very fortunate in our area, to have a lot of local resources. We have police, we have school resource officers, we have all sorts of other people that can respond very, very, very quickly to these sorts of things, and they are the experts in these areas. So it is certainly something that we have to think about from a lot of different angles, a lot of different respects. We're going to continue, as President O'Brien said, to talk about this over the course of the summer, look at things like mental health, look at things like additional school safety and other things like that. We take this seriously, we're going to continue to take it seriously. But this particular thing, to me, I always speak for myself, I don't believe it's a good idea to have teachers themselves being armed in accordance with this.
And I'm going to agree with Mr. Lester. I do not agree with having teachers with the weapons or a gun in school. Again, we all have our children, I'm married to a school teacher, so my stance is very firm on not having that.
Yeah, I mean, I come from a different perspective. I grew up with guns in the home. My dad and mom were very diligent to teach us. I remember as a young person about my son's age now, I took a class about how to just do everything you have to do with guns, because ours focus was on hunting, but also just safety in the home. So this issue's personal to me because I'm not afraid of guns. I don't get afraid when my neighbors have them, I trust them, I know them. But 21 years of teaching and understanding that safety is the most important thing on my heart and mind every day as a teacher and as a board member, I do not want to arm teachers in my schools. I don't think that will address the problem. 24 hours is just not enough time to become an expert at something so crucial as having a weapon in our schools. So it's passion, I mean, I say, when we hear things that are happening in our schools, it does keep me up at night. I never knew it would be like this with so many things happening with kids. But we don't, arming our teachers is not our solution.
Similar message for me, so I have no problem with responsible gun ownership. This isn't about being anti-guns. I believe we have sufficient and effective strategies to keep our students and staff safe, and we will continue to evolve those strategies. We will have Director Susie and Sheriff Martin in a meeting in August to talk about our safety strategies, which I think will be important to continue to inform the community on what we are doing to keep the schools and staff safe. So with that, given these thoughts, I don't see any appetite to change Board Policy 3217. And again, we will continue to implement adhered to its security measures, and the board will continue to receive regular security briefings from Director Susie, and we will continue to monitor this issue. Anything else? No. All right. That is all I had for the Board President's Report. Now I'll entertain a motion to go into an executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to discuss the appointment of a public official. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In terms of discussion, we will come back to take action. I do, we will take every effort to be brief, because I know people are here for other things, so we will try to be brief, and we'll be back in, I'm going to call it 15 minutes or less. Please call the roll.
Dr. Deborah Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're set. All right, it is 6:48. I'll call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to our next agenda item, item six. I'll now entertain a motion to appoint a new board member.
Mr. O'Brien, I will move to appoint Libby Wallach to the Olentangie School District, Board of Education.
Have a second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the vote to appoint Libby Wallach as our next board member? I want to say this, you know, in terms of the process, you know, we had, again, 28 people, 27, 28 people put their name forward. Really appreciate the investment of time and energy into that process, the application and interview process for those folks. We would hope that they would further that interest and get involved in committees with the board. So with that, please call the roll, Ms. Hatfield.
Dr. Deborah Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
And Dr. Weiss.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, so now we'll call up Dr. Wallach to come and be sworn in. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I believe I have a bag for you. After. Distracted by the bag.
So I, oh, excuse me, please raise your right hand. And I, please state your name.
I, Elizabeth Wallach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
In and for.
In and for.
The Olentangie Local School District in Delaware County, Ohio.
The Olentangie Local School District in Delaware County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect.
Now in effect.
And hereafter to be enacted.
And hereafter to be enacted.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations. I would like you to sign your, oh, this is a copy of what you just made there, so if you'll sign that, and then you may proceed to speak next to Mr. Rafe.
Or Mr. Lester.
Thank you, I'm welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Wallach, congratulations.
All right, we'll now move on to the presentation items. We have the Community Partner Recognition Awards. Dr. Lakeisha Weiss will then take over the agenda from her seat.
Yes. All right. Good evening and welcome. Tonight, the board will recognize community members who have given their time and talent to enrich our schools. The Olentangie Board of Education established the Community Service Awards in 1986 to honor community residents who have had a major impact on our children's education through their volunteer efforts or significant monetary or in-kind donations. I'm going to name each of the award winners and read to you some comments provided by those who nominated them. When your name is called, please come forward to accept your award and have your photo taken with Superintendent Mark Rafe and Board President Kevin O'Brien. We'd also like to take a group picture of all out, of all, of our outstanding Community Service Award winners. So after all the awards are presented, please gather outside the main entrance for a group photo. First, Michelle Cosner, nominated by Shell Meadows Elementary. Michelle Cosner played an instrumental role in establishing the first Shell Meadows Parent-Teacher Organization. During this time, she personally donated items to the school, including the mascot, Monarch Monte. Michelle has helped to lead various community events, parent volunteers, and always advocates for what is best for our students. She has paved the way for the continued success and support of the Shell Meadows PTO. Thank you, Michelle. Dr. Lisa and Mr. William Davison.
Thank you, on their behalf, is Karen Welton from Davison Orthodontics. Dr. Lisa and Mr. William Davison have been a remarkable support over the years to the staff and students of Wyandotte Run Elementary. Many have benefited from their generosity both monetarily and through their educational visits to classrooms. Most recently, their donation of water bottles for students during COVID was extremely beneficial for those students that would forget them at home. We appreciate their help and kindness to Wyandotte Run Elementary. Thank you. Jill Lammy, nominated by Olentangie Orange High School Marching Pioneers. Jill Lammy has served the past four years in multiple capacities supporting the performing arts programs at Orange High School. A large portion of her service has been volunteering in the outdoor concession stand, a longstanding fundraiser that supports the band, choir, orchestra, and drama programs. Jill has given five to 15 hours of service per week over the past two years as the outdoor concessions lead. Her commitment to providing support to the performing arts programs through this fundraising effort is greatly appreciated by the directors, students, and parents. We would like to thank Jill Lammy and recognize her for her service as an Olentangie Schools' community partner. Mary Lorenz, nominated by Wyandotte Run Elementary School. Mary Lorenz is a valued community partner. As our PTO co-president, she is always working to make Wyandotte Run Elementary better school, a better school. We are grateful for the support of our PTO and volunteers. Ms. Lorenz has donated her time and talent to make the front entrance of Wyandotte Run look more student-friendly, volunteers at all events and oversees the building's logo wear sales. We appreciate all she has done for Wyandotte Run staff and students. Felida Moran, nominated by Walnut Creek Elementary. Felida Moran has long served as the PTO president at Walnut Creek Elementary. Adversity has been a large part of her presidency as it was during COVID. Felida went out of her way to find ways to keep the PTO involved and successful during such a crazy time. During the initial lockdown phase, she created fun contests and activities that students can do at home. She would share results via social media to keep students excited and engaged in these activities. In addition, she created a COVID-friendly movie night that was drive-in theater style. Her efforts also included spearheading successful fundraisers that allowed the students at Walnut Creek to receive additional materials and supplies that they would not get without the PTO's support. Ms. Moran organized charitable, giving opportunities for students and families. She even coordinated for Walnut Creek to receive office equipment from her own company. Felida communicates constantly with administrators at Walnut Creek and is always trying to support the learning programs at Walnut Creek. She has been instrumental in revamping the bookroom and providing new, engaging guided reading materials. Thank you for your amazing and supporting services to Walnut Creek Elementary. Ashley and Salon Wise, nominated by Berkshire Middle School. The Wise family, through their creation of the Parent Diversity Network, have worked to support district diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. What started as a series of informal conversations with diverse district families and their allies has blossomed into a network that aims to meet the needs of the entire community. Ashley and Salon Wise have worked to provide opportunities for education and outreach, safe spaces for difficult conversations, and an array of other services to further the district's mission of facilitating maximum learning for all students. Thank you, Ashley and Salon.
All right, we have our next presentation. It's one of my favorite presentations of the year because Lanko always brings us treats. So Ms. Stephanie Lanko, our supervisor of food service.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I love to hear that I am your favorite. I won't tell anyone else. Your secret's with me. So kids obviously really like it because it's nice and colorful and it tastes really good for a fruit option. And then I have some regular crispy treats and some strawberry crispy treats that all are school compliant. So I'll give Mr. Rafe the basket first and see if he promises to pass it down.
Teacher, one of the things we learn in teacher school is if it's free, it's for
me.
But if you take a CoolTropics, make sure you take it home and freeze it because it's not meant to be consumed in that manner. But, okay, so I am here tonight just to give an update about the food service department, kind of what happened this past school year and what we're looking for into this next, the 2022-23 school year. So just as an overview, the food service department, we are a sponsor of the National School Lunch and the School Breakfast Program, which means we are overseen by the United States Department of Agriculture, or the USDA, at a federal level. And then locally, we are overseen by the Ohio Department of Education, the Office of Nutrition. So they are the ones that come in every couple of years and they will do an audit of our program to ensure that we're following all of the rules and regulations that USDA has set up. We are meant to operate as a nonprofit department. We have all of our kitchens, all of our schools have onsite kitchens. We have 25 kitchens. Each of those kitchens has a manager, so we have 25 managers now with Shell Meadows opening. And we have over 100 food service workers. And then in a support capacity, we have one maintenance man, Mr. Josh Hershey, who does a wonderful job maintaining all of our equipment. Two administrative assistants, Kim Profio and Stacy Quinn, who are always busy with paying bills, ordering food, and making sure I'm staying on task, too. Two assistant supervisors, Michelle Mancini and Michelle Palo. So it's very easy, both Michelles, keep it easy. And then one supervisor, myself. So as a recap for the 2021-22 school year, as most people are aware, USDA issued waivers back in April of 2021, which allowed us to continue offering meals at no cost to students under what they call the Seamless Summer Option, or SSO. And this was the second year in a row that we were able to offer meals at no cost. Under the Seamless Summer Option, every meal served to a student is reimbursed at the federal government, is reimbursed by the federal government at the federal reimbursement rate. It doesn't take into account the student's eligibility status. Everyone is reimbursed at the free rate. I've included on this slide the reimbursement rates we received from August until December. So for each breakfast that was served during those months, we got over $2.46. And then for each lunch served, we got over $4.31. And since it's meant to operate typically under the, in summer, hence why it's called Seamless Summer Option, they adjust those rates in January of each year. So in January, they actually increased our reimbursement and we got $2.60 for each breakfast and then $4.56 for each lunch served. And that was through May. And just so everyone realizes, every student is eligible for one breakfast and one lunch each day that we operate. So here are the numbers that we did for the school year. I did an average per day and then our yearly totals. So for breakfast, on average, we did 3,989 breakfasts per day for a total of 678,000 breakfasts for the year. That was an increase of over 200% pre-shutdown. So we saw a lot of students, a lot more students coming through the breakfast line, which was awesome. For lunch, on average, we did 13,663 lunches per day for a total of 2.3 million lunches served. That was also an increase of about 45% compared to shutdown. And then our à la carte equivalents, we were doing about 6,415 per day. So for over a million à la carte equivalents for the school year. That was down a little bit compared to pre-shutdown, about 16%. But obviously, we had a lot more kids still coming through the line and they were, instead of buying à la carte, they were likely making it a meal, which is what we wanted to see. So total, on average per day, we were serving 24,066 meals per day and served over 4 million meals as a total. Pre-shutdown, we had never served over 3 million meals, so to serve over 4 million was a great feat. So it was nice to see so many students taking advantage of those meals at no cost, getting a breakfast, getting a lunch. And it was also amazing to see our food service staff step up to that challenge of having that many more kids come through the, come through their line and be able to service them in the same way they were beforehand.
So again, so breakfast and lunch, you had the federal reimbursement, but the à la carte, we kind of had to manage on our own.
Correct.
It was, looks like you did a great job if we're generating $26,000 a day in net profit.
Right. So our revenue was about 89, was almost 90,000 a day and our expenses were about 63,000. So we were able to generate a profit, which is why on the board agenda, you'll see that we are repaying back $2 million that we were, of the 3 million that we were given over the course of the two years that we were under either when we were shut down or under the hybrid attendance model. So, yeah, so that's, that's why, because our reimbursement was so high and we had so many kids coming through the breakfast and lunch lines.
All right, that's great news.
Yeah. Any other questions about that slide? Okay. We did, even with the increased numbers, we did experience some challenges. So staffing was one of them. Obviously, with the amount of meals we were serving in some, in most of the buildings, we were, we were serving those increased meals with the same amount of staff, if not less staff. And obviously, we had staff that were maybe isolating because of positive COVID cases. So that was one of our challenges. Supply chain disruptions, out of stocks. We were lucky enough that we already worked with two mainline distributors, Cisco Cleveland and GFS Springfield. So we had access to both of those distributors. So we were able, if one distributor was out, we were hopeful that the other one would have it. But every Friday was our GFS out of stocks. And what used to take a half hour to do was taking all day to go through all those out of stocks, figuring out what we're going to order. Paper products was a huge challenge, especially in the fall. You couldn't get five compartment trays at all. If you found a case, you were like hitting the lottery. And if you could get it at a good price, you were just jumping out of your seat. But we got creative. We bought plates. We took to-go containers and cut them in half so the students had something to put their food on to so they could go eat it. Food, like I already talked about, we had a lot of out of stocks, but we had, we got a little, a little bit more flexible with our menu and made some changes to the menu to allow for some flexibility. So for example, at the elementary level, we used to be very specific, French toast with sausage or French toast with eggs. Instead, we changed it to brunch for lunch entree. So it could be French toasts, it could be waffles, it could be pancakes. We just couldn't guarantee what it was we would be able to get at that time. We experienced price increases throughout the school year as it relates to paper products and our chicken products. And even some of our vendors started putting fuel surcharges on their deliveries. So those were just some of the challenges we experienced throughout the school year. Okay, now planning for this coming 2022-23 school year. So the waivers that allowed us to operate under the Seamless Summer Option, they expired on our last day of school, so on March 26th, they have expired for us. So that means meals will be going, will no longer be available at no cost to all students. Now, as I was coming down here, there's been some movement by Congress to pass some additional flexibilities. The House actually passed an act this afternoon. So we'll have to work through it to see exactly what that means for us. But they're trying to get it passed by June 30th because that's when the national waivers officially expire. So, so stay tuned, things could be changing. But as of right now, meals will be going back to being an eligibility-based pricing. So meals will not be available at no cost to students next school year. It'll be back to pre-pandemic. It'll be based on paid, reduced, and free. We will have free and reduced meal applications available starting July 1. That's USDA timeline. You can't have them available until July 1. So families that believe they can qualify, believe they qualify can apply. The federal meal reimbursement rates will decrease, decrease back to pre-pandemic. So pre-pandemic, our reimbursement rate was $3.41 for a free and reduced meal. And as you saw in the prior slides, we were at over $4.50. And then our meal charge procedure will go back into effect for students if they do not have money on their lunch account. So that's what we see for next year happening.
I guess my only ask is just to make sure that we put out sufficient communication to parents so that there's no surprise.
Yes.
When students come back in August, all of a sudden they have to pay, they've kind of gone through two years of not paying. We just got to over-communicate that.
Yes. And I've already talked to Communications Department about how we're going to approach communicating it to the community so they are aware because we don't want surprises. We don't want, you know, kids being upset in the lunch line. So yes, that is our plan for sure.
Thank you.
So challenges we already anticipate for next school year. We've already seen our food and supply prices are going to increase. So we are a member of a food cooperative. And of that bid, of the top 50 items purchased, we see a 20% increase of those items. There was about a third of the items that were no-bid items, which means the distributor may be stocking it, but they're not willing to lock in a price for the school year because of the variation of the market right now. Distributors can change their price with a 30-day notice. And then locally, I took our top 20 items purchased by volume and I saw a 24.27% increase in our food and supplies of those top 20 items by volume. So that's a challenge that we know we're going to have to work through. A decrease in revenue per meal. So like we already talked about, the reimbursement from the federal government is likely going to go down and we were used to getting the $4.50 this past year. Concerns over product availability to meet the meal pattern and nutritional requirements. So part of the waivers with Seamless Summer waived any financial penalty for not meeting the meal pattern because you couldn't procure certain items. Well, because with the waivers expiring that now, we could be, have fiscal penalties if we're not following the meal pattern. And then kind of like what you said, Mr. O'Brien, reeducating that Olentangie community on the meal program because we've had two years of meals being available at no cost. Because you think about a student who's in second grade or going into second grade, kindergarten, first grade, they've never paid for a meal. So reeducating those families as to now why you have to pay for them when you haven't had to pay for them the past two years.
With some of the financial penalties relative to the meal patterns, is that part of that legislation that's going through? Because I imagine with, you know, looking at.
Possibly.
Grain with the wheat, you know, issues and all of that.
Yes.
It's concerning.
Yes. I believe that's in the legislation. Just exactly what it says, I don't know yet. But hopefully so because there's a lot of supply chain issues with getting, getting whole grain breads and products like that, too.
Mr. O'Brien, if I could ask a question or two. What percentage of the total amount of food that we buy are those top 50 items? Is that pretty much everything or is there?
No, it's a pretty small, I mean, not small. I mean, our order guide has several hundred items that we purchase, but the top 50 items was a 20%. Just nationwide, we're seeing about a 15%, 20% increase in food.
Okay.
Let's go.
I guess to Dr. Dabaco's point, the food service fund has sufficient, say, cash or capital in it so we can weather some pressure on expenses and not automatically increase the price. But it just buys us time until ultimately we're going to have to increase the price per meal. The fact that we've got a surplus in that fund buys us some time to weather some of the inflation pressure for it automatically results in a price increase. Is that fair?
It's fair. So my next slide, it's talking about meal prices. So right, we do have, we do have some carryover. We are repaying back 2 million. And then we have paying employees over the summer and then all of our startup costs. It's recommended to have a three-month operating balance in our account, which is about 2, 2.5 million. So we want to make sure we have that in case, I mean, we saw, case in point with the, with the shutdown, we went through our reserves very quickly and had to be supplemented by the general fund.
So when we talk with Mrs. Lanko, just to kind of give you a little bit more information, we've been tracking the fiscal year-end unencumbered balance. It's roughly 5.4 million. Paying back two leaves about 3.4 million. Traditionally, to Mrs. Lanko's point, you would see roughly $2 million would suffice for startup costs, but with the increase, we're not quite sure if that'll cover it. So we've left more than we traditionally would have in her service fund to make sure that startup costs are met.
In the five-year forecast assumes additional transfers, correct?
In the five-year forecast, no. We did not put the transfer in our May update.
Okay.
So this is going to help improve the outcome of the five-year forecast for the November update.
Okay.
And then this next slide has kind of our school meals price history since 2010. So pre-shutdown, back in 2019, 2020, our elementary meal price was $2.50. Our middle school meal price was $2.75. And at the high school, we had a tiered lunch price at 3 or 3.50 that was based upon what entree the students selected dictated what the cost was. And our breakfast is $1.50 currently. And because of our food cost increase of over 20%, we were going to be recommending, likely at the next board meeting, but we'll have to see what happens with this legislation, about a 50 cent increase at all grade levels for lunches and then a 25 cent increase at breakfast. So that would take elementary up to $3, middle school 3.25, and then high school 3.50 or $4, and then breakfast at $1.75. By doing so with the food cost increase, it's basically going to cover our food cost increase so we can continue to service the students in the same manner that we have the past several, the past years past.
Do we have a sense of the average student, how many, pre-pandemic, recognizing that the past two years have been off? How many meals the average student gets in a year to look at the financial impact of that on, on a family, right? If you're looking at, okay, I expect to have, you know, 200 meals or, you know, whatever it is, how much of an additional cost that would be?
I don't have the number by student. I typically just do it by day and then a yearly. So like pre-pandemic, we were usually under 10,000 meals per day, so we could divide that out by how many students, to see how many meals they're buying on average. I can tell you my students buy every day.
Yeah. So just thinking through the math, it sounds like it's probably about $100 to $200 more a year if a child buys breakfast and lunch. If a dollar a meal, right? I mean, sorry, 50 cents a meal?
50 cents for lunch and then 25 cents for breakfast.
Yeah.
So 75 cents a day if they, if they are purchasing both lunch and breakfast.
If you're looking at, okay, I expect to have, you know, 200 meals or, you know, whatever it is, how much of an additional cost that would be?
I don't have the number by student. I typically just do it by day and then a yearly. So like pre-pandemic, we were usually under 10,000 meals per day. So we could divide that out by how many students to see how many meals they're buying on average. I can tell you my students buy every day.
Yeah.
So just thinking through the math, it sounds like it's probably about $100 to $200 more a year if a child buys breakfast and lunch. If a dollar a meal, right? I'm sorry, 50 cents a meal?
50 cents for lunch and then 25 cents for breakfast.
Yeah.
So 75 cents a day if they are purchasing both lunch and breakfast. Now, if.
Is that good of my numbers?
But the rate increase is still less than the inflationary increase. You're going to 18% to 20% on the rate, and inflation costs are going up 24%. So at least increasing the rate less than what we're seeing in terms of inflation pressure, at least on the top 20 items in the SKU.
Mm-hmm.
So it's interesting that all your prices over the last 10 years have been less than inflation because I think over the last decade, inflation is about 33% over the last decade, and you're only going up, not even close to that, a quarter in breakfast. I mean, right?
Mm-hmm. We.
So I'm saying that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm, right. I mean, we try not to raise lunch prices. It's never a goal to raise lunch prices.
We've only raised them when we've had to.
We've only typically raised them when we had to. So I can't remember the year that it started.
And when we had to, it was because the federal government.
Yes.
Wouldn't reimburse us if we didn't.
Correct.
Not because the Food Service Fund needed the money, it's because the way the reimbursement is written, we had to raise prices to continue to get reimbursed.
Correct.
Because I think that's an important designation because we don't just raise prices because we can. It's not market-based pricing. We just raise prices when we have to.
Right. It's lunch price equity, which was part of child nutrition reauthorization. Because you had, they were basically trying to get school districts to raise their paid lunch prices to where the reimbursement was at for the free and reduced-priced meals. Because a lot of school districts were using the funds that, the reimbursement they were receiving from their free and reduced students to offset the cost of the paid lunches. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, it's very clear that we're significantly impacted by the supply chain, right? I mean, no doubt. And we're seeing this in all sectors, right? I mean, costs are going up all around, and we're not immune to that. So, you know, don't take my question as critical, right? But it's, in thinking through, you know, this is going to be a change for people. And so I think it's going to be really important for people to understand, you know, depending on where the legislation goes, what that looks like, and as we're considering it, just what that impact is on each, you know, each individual family. Luckily, we've been getting, you know, very timely support for families by having these no-cost things for the past two years. I mean, that's significant. And I think people, you know, need to understand that as well. But a lot of this being a change and being a significant change is just very important that we're very clear with people and for us to be clear as we're working through it.
Yes, yes.
But what you're referring to that passed, is that the Keep Kids Fed Act? Is that what you're referring to?
With the.
What they passed today, is that part of that?
Oh, Keeps Kids, yes. Keep Kids Fed Act, yes. Sorry, yes. There's been a couple of different legislations they've tried to get passed, and this is the one that seems to have more movement than the other ones because it did pass the House. But it has to pass the Senate, and it sounds like there's some senators that maybe are not for it.
So I guess given the uncertainty around the legislation, is it appropriate for us to, probably shouldn't vote on a price increase until we understand what the legislative impact is.
Right. It's not on the board agenda to approve tonight.
Good.
This was kind of the preliminary groundwork, and this legislation came up very quickly.
Yeah.
So.
Which is unusual.
Yeah, exactly. I'm glad you said that.
I think it's fast.
I wasn't, yeah, mm-hmm. And that's all I have, unless anyone has any other questions.
Thank you for what you do.
Oh, thank you. I enjoy it. Every day is a fun day when I come to work.
Yeah, my kids enjoy way too much of your hard work, so.
I take that, like I told you, I take that as a compliment when they like it that much. So thank you, and.
Thank you.
I always invite you to come to the cafeteria. If you ever want to eat lunch or breakfast, let me know. I'd be happy to meet you.
Make sure you bring a debit card.
All right.
Next up is the superintendent's report, Mr. Rafe.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here as usual. Start off with some good news to share. Berlin High School was named America's Most Spirited High School by Varsity Brands. And Varsity Brands is a marketing company that supports schools throughout the country and the work they do to create, you know, a unique student experience. So Berlin, it's pretty amazing, after four years in existence, they were awarded a $25,000 cash prize that they'll be presented probably at opening school pep rally that Mr. Spinner will be able to use to, again, enhance the student experience at Berlin High School. So congratulations to them. As you know, we have a lot of summer activity going on in the areas of enrichment. So you see here, our C program ran from June 6th through the 16th with all kinds of various activities. The last time we ran in-person C, we had 700 courses. This time, we had over 1,000 courses. So our kids were really eager to take advantage of those enrichment activities. And then we also have a lot of intervention activities going on. So our Olentangie Summer Intervention Academy and extended school years where we, extended school year services are happening all throughout the district. So continuing to support academic growth throughout the summer for the students that need that. So that's pretty brief. It's one of my briefer living the mission segments. So I'll hit the action items. We have quite a few administrators on the docket. Two elementary principals. Dana Kimchi is moving over to Johnny K. Corners Elementary School. And Dana's been with us for seven years as assistant principal at Olentangie Meadows. And then Michael Warren is coming to us from Pittsburgh Public Schools. He is going to be the new principal at Arrowhead Elementary School. And then we have four other assistant principals. Now that Dana has moved over, we are down to one administrative appointment left to do. And Mrs. Baker at Meadows will be starting that very quickly. And then we have a couple furniture purchases as our normal process to replenish the furniture supply throughout the district. So there's two furniture purchases. And then cyber coverage here is something that has become very, very necessary, unfortunately, in terms of.
Expensive, yeah.
And very, very expensive. Mr. Gordon went through a very, very lengthy process to just get us the coverage that we do have here on the agenda. So, but it is certainly necessary because we don't want any of our staff or student or fiscal data being breached, so. And then our next board meeting is July 7th. And it's always interesting, at that meeting, I'll have the opening of school dates. It's a sign of summer just flying by. Questions?
Any questions, Mr. Rafe?
Nope. Thank you, Mr. Rafe.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Hatfield, the treasurer's report.
And congratulations, Dr. Wallach. Welcome.
Be able to do without that big, ugly brace I had for a while. So good evening. I wanted to give you an update of the district debt profile. This is an item that we have been working on. As you know, we have been issuing the segments of debt that we were, that was voter-approved with the 2020 ballot items. And so we have issued that last piece of that debt, the $27 million that was sold. This spring is now officially on board and on hand for the construction of Elementary 17. So we're excited to have that wrapped up. With that, we have some new statistics that we wanted to talk about. Again, just to reiterate to our community, we have one of the highest credit ratings available, AA1 with Moody's and a AAA with S&amp;P Global, which means that the debt that we carry is at the lowest interest rates possible. It's considered a very secure investment to purchase bonds sold by Olentangie Schools. So that's really good to share with our community. Our outstanding par is at $433 million. But more than half of that $433 million, about 51%, is actually par that's been generated through refunding, meaning that we are constantly looking at when we can refund debt that was previously issued to get it at a cheaper interest rate. Over the last several years, we've been having refundings come to the board for approval quite frequently. And with markets trending as they are with interest rates and inflationary rates, as Mrs. Linco just discussed with you, I have a feeling that those are going to slow down a little bit. But we will continue to watch the market and take a look at any options that are coming up in the future. So good news to report for the district with our debt profile. We do know of two fiscal year-end variances that we will see as we close. Our fiscal year end is June 30th. We are wrapping up that process as we speak. But these two particular items are variances that are going to be positive for the district as compared to the five-year forecast. The first item is approximately $1.6 million received from the Delaware County Auditor's Office. It was returned collection fees. So about $300,000 of that will be applied to the Debt Service Fund, which we use to pay off the voted debt, and Permanent Improvement Fund, which we use to make capital improvements that are shorter than a 30-year lifespan. The rest of that is related, directly related, excuse me, to the general fund. So the general fund is what shows up on the forecast. That's what our five-year forecast reflects. But we do have a differentiation in how that has to post just by accounting standards. A little more than half, about $850,000, will be posted as a receipt of a prior-year expense, which shows up as revenue on the five-year forecast. And then $450,000 reduction of expenditure, which shows up as a lesser expense on the five-year forecast. So we've referenced those line items to kind of help make that differentiation as we talk about those numbers. Once we close, we'll have a full report. But that will help kind of give you context to how those numbers come through the five-year forecast. And then again, as we discussed a little bit with Mrs. Linco's presentation, a $2 million transfer from the Food Service back to the general fund, which shows up on Forecast Line 2.040. We took a really conservative approach with having this not a part of our May five-year forecast. Again, trying to make sure we were going through our numbers, having reference for whether or not the summer programs and free breakfast and lunch would be offered this upcoming year, inflationary rates, et cetera. We really left it out of the forecast so that we could get Mrs. Linco closer to the completion of the fiscal year and have a better understanding of where she was at. So happy to report that this is about 67% of the total transfer of $3 million. So we're excited that we are able to complete that before fiscal year end, but it will show as a variance. And then treasurer action items for this evening, we have our May financials, which line up with our five-year forecast. We try to, we do make the five-year forecast report out in May, but because of just general operations and when we close that, we are just bringing the May financials forward for official approval. We have amended appropriations, our last budget changes for this current fiscal year. We also have our May board meeting minutes for both May meetings. A donation of over $1,100 for supplemental lacrosse coaching from Olentangie Athletic Boosters. We are always so grateful for those donations, not only monetary but in-kind donations, especially as we celebrate our community partners who were with us this evening as awardees. And then finally, our permanent appropriations for fiscal year '23. That's setting the budget for next fiscal year. We have presented the general fund budget through the five-year forecast presentation and given you quite a few details on that. This permanent appropriation also brings in the other funds that we monitor from, everything from our self-insured health account through food service, through student activities and athletic funds. So all of those funds are encompassed in this particular item. Are there questions I can answer for you regarding all of that information? A lot of financial numbers, right? Well, thank you. I appreciate your attention as we go through that.
All right, so the next agenda item is public participation. Do we have any public participation?
No, there is none this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll move to the board action items. So I'll present board action items A and B, which is a, it's like we, easy to correct salary increase that we missed and then the transfer that Ms. Hatfield referred to. So with that, can I entertain a motion to approve board action items A and B?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabaco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
I will abstain.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Ms. Hatfield, do you want to present the treasurer action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasurer action items A through E for your approval, please.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Can I hear a second? Any discussion on the treasurer action items A through E? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabaco?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Abstain.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rafe, would you please present the superintendent action items?
Yes, sir. I'd like to present superintendent action items A through F for approval.
Okay, and a motion? So moved? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabaco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Abstain.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Our next being.
Wait, I can't go that fast.
Next being is July 7th. Back here. Please call the roll.
Dr. Dabaco?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
First official vote.